So Alan, Scott, are you ready? We call a September 22nd, 2015 meeting in McMinnville City Council to session. Let the record indicate that we are starting this meeting at 7:19, so we're a little bit late for this, but since we do not have a public hearing scheduled for any specific time, we'll be just fine. That being said, in your packet there was a city manager's memo, and what I will do is I will ask, how about Kelly, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kelly. Now that we've had the Pledge of Allegiance, this is a time where we'll invite citizens who would like to address the council about anything that is not on our agenda tonight to come forward. There's some things that we, again, I will tell you that we cannot discuss anything that is already on the agenda, we'd ask you to wait for that time. If the city is currently in a matter in litigation, we will not be able to discuss that. A quasi judicial land use matter or a matter scheduled, the public hearing at some future date, so if we know that there's a quasi judicial land use matter coming before us now or a little bit later, we will, don't accept any testimony on that, and of course I can limit the duration of this. So is there anybody who would like to speak to the council on anything that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing none, we'll move forward. Then we have the minutes of the July 28th, 2015 dinner and regular meetings, and has anybody, everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Do you have any corrections or modifications? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the minutes of the July 28th, 2015 dinner and regular city council meetings.
So moved.
I have a move by Councilor Hill, a second by Councilor Manke, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the minutes for the July 28th, 2015 dinner and regular city council meetings have been approved. That takes us on to our next item, and we do have a proclamation tonight, and I will move forward, and I think it's very appropriate. I'll call Jody Christensen forward for the proclamation.
For those who attend, this proclamation is for National Manufacturing Day, and I am happy to report because of this finding, Jody Christensen, next to this manufacturing right now is in a good state of cleanup, could be better, but it could be a lot worse. And because of Joe, we're very fortunate to have Jody as our director of the park. So, National Manufacturing Day is October 2nd, 2015. Whereas manufacturing makes a very significant contribution to the national, state, and local economy, and whereas our community is fortunate to be the home of many world-class manufacturing companies, and whereas those manufacturing companies add to the vitality and prosperity of our community, now, therefore, I, Richard L., Rick Olson, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim October 2nd, 2015, the National Manufacturing Day, and all, and all citizens joining in recognizing the value of our manufacturers and the importance they serve in our community. In witness whereat, I have merit to sign my pen and hand and cause official seal. You remember, to the effects, this is 22nd day of September, 2015. So Jody begins to read on our manufacturing partners.
Thank you. Would you like to share with the council and mayors? The Lynnfield College Career Center will be taking a number of students to tour core of our manufacturing. This is the second year that they've done it for National Manufacturing Day, and they produce videos, stories, and help disconnect the students with the opportunities of best of all. Thank you very much.
Good job, and thank you for everything you do, Jody. Okay, that takes us to our new business section of our meeting, and our new business tonight, we have one piece of new business, and that's appointments to the McMinnville Landscape Review Committee. There was information in your packet, and what I'll do is I will turn over to Doug for any staff report, and if you'd like to report on this, Doug?
On behalf of you, so Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'll summarize for you and the benefit of the council members what's in that report. In summary, in the last couple of months, we have lost about 60% of our five member of Landscape Review Committee. We advertise for suitable members to replace those three, and every see three applications, copies of which are in your packet. Staff is recommending that you appoint this evening those three members to replace the departed members of the Landscape Review Committee.
Okay, do we have any of them in the audience tonight, Doug, that you know of?
Not that I can see.
Okay, thank you. We have a recommendation, councilors from staff. Has everybody had a chance to review the applications? Does anyone have any questions or concern regarding any of the applicants? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve all the three applicants as recommended by staff.
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Yoder, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Ruden, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that all the people that were nominated or recommended by staff have been and will be appointed to the Landscape Review Committee. So, thank you very much, Doug. Okay, that takes us into our resolution section, and we'll cover the three on the agenda, but we do have two additional ad resolutions tonight, so we will have five resolutions on our agenda, but the first one is Resolution Number 2015-43, and that's adopting a supplemental budget for the fiscal year 2015-16 and making the appropriate adjustments. So Martha, do you want to talk about that one a little bit? Since Marcia isn't here.
You betcha, and on top of it, Mike is here, because it's, we got actually two resolutions coming up, back to back, referencing our airport and the monies that are surrounding the refurb of our main runway out there. And in this particular one, the amount of dollars that came open for, on grant dollars, were more than what we had anticipated, so we need to do a budget amendment to make that happen, and to give you the specifics of that, I'm going to hand it over to Mike.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll refer you to the brief memo that's in your packet from Finance Director Marcia Bargary. As Martha mentioned, at your last meeting, you accepted a Federal Aviation Airport Improvement Program grant. Those funds were in excess of what we had programmed into the fiscal year budget. More funding was available at the federal level than anticipated. State statute does allow you to adopt a supplemental budget to accept that additional revenue, and then to increase your materials and services expenditure line to reflect expending that grant money that you're receiving. And so the resolution that's in your packet reflects the additional revenue in the amount of $380,300, and it also reflects an expenditure line in that same amount. And unless there are any questions, staff would recommend you adopt the resolution as presented.
Okay, councilor, again, although we have a second one coming up, this is just for the actual supplemental budget for the 2015 year regarding our airports. So that being said, thank you, Michael, is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 2015-43?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Hill, second by Councilor Manke, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that Resolution Number 2015-43 has passed the council. That will take us to our next one, and again, Michael, this will be Resolution 2015-44, and this will be awarding a task order to Century West Engineering for the runway 4-22 rehabilitation project. So Mike, I'll turn it back to you again.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and again, I'll refer you to the brief memo that's in your packet, as well as the resolution formalizing the task order with Century West Engineering. Century West Engineering is the consultant of record for the airport runway rehab project. They've been under contract with us for pre-design and environmental work. This task order carries their work through design and to the point of bidding. These services are funded 90% by the Federal Aviation Administration grant funds, and also through the Connect Oregon 5 grant funds that we receive related to the project. So the scope of work and costs are attached for your information, and unless there are any questions, we would recommend that you adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the contract amendment with Century West Engineering.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Counselor, are there any questions on it? Alan?
Mike, it looks like we're on schedule for some construction to start next year, then. Is that, are we still on that?
Alan, that's an excellent question. The original construction schedule anticipated a summer of 2016, construction commencing. There've been a couple of things that we're working through, one related to Crookshank Road and its proximity to the airport runway protection area. We're still working through that with FAA, and it's possible that the construction window may slide, but we're doing everything we can to keep us on track. We'll probably have more information related to that as we get into the design and get through FAA's process related to that runway protection area. So we're hopeful for 2016, but that construction schedule may slide. Our funding will still remain, even if we do have to slide.
Good, thank you.
Michael, Mike, very briefly, if you can, what is the issue with the protected area in Crookshank Road? Is it the location of Crookshank Road itself, or?
Yeah, so Crookshank Road has been and continues to be within the defined RPZ, the runway protection zone. In previous projects where we've touched the runway, FAA has granted us an exception from having to either relocate the road, or close the road, or shorten the runway. There've been some recent changes at the federal level regarding how FAA has to look at those runway protection zones from a safety standpoint, and we may not be able to receive the same exception that we've received in the past, although Rich was meeting today with our FAA project contact, and we remain optimistic that they'll be able to maneuver through an exception process that allows us to keep the length of the runway and not have to relocate the road. So it's a work in progress.
And so, Mike, is the road county, or is it state?
Crookshank Road is a county road that's eventually slated for closure when a little farther north in the Highway 18 corridor, the Lafayette Highway intersection is created in, or reconstructed into an interchange. And so that's in the long way range plan for ODOT, and the fact that that is the long-range plan has been enough for us in the past, when we've had runway projects, to receive an exception to the standard. We're not certain that we're going to get that exception this time, but we're doing the, our consultant and staff are working through that issue, and we do have the assistance of the State Department of Aviation regarding that matter. So it's a work in progress, you know, I can't say for certainty that we're going to be able to get an exception, but we're hopeful or cautiously optimistic that that will take place.
Do you see, if we can't get the exception, that that intersection that you talked about being put higher priority with the state of Oregon with ODOT?
Well, that's, you know, just off the seat of my pants estimate, probably a multimillion-dollar interchange, because it's grade separated with overpass and ramps, and so 11 to 13 to however many million dollars to construct, and so we know that's not in any short-term state plan for construction. The reality of what likely would happen is we would likely need to shorten the runway by a small distance, say 100 feet, and relocate all the navigation instrumentation that is at that end of the runway. That's about a million dollar exercise, of which there would be federal funding available to cover, but we would have to cover the shortfall between our Connect Oregon 5 grant and the additional construction cost. So it's a work in progress, and as we maneuver through that issue, we'll keep the council and the airport commission up to date.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Any more questions of staff? If not, I will entertain a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2015-44.
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Manke, second by Councilor Ruden, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that that Resolution Number 2015-44 has passed. That'll take us to Resolution 2015-45, and this is awarding the contract for Park Design Engineering and Construction Services for our new Northwest Neighborhood Park, and I'll turn this over to Jay.
As I know, we completed the master plan last April for the Northwest Neighborhood Park, so to advance the project for construction, it requires to hire the consultant to help us do just that, confirm the design, complete any design elements that are still outstanding, particularly the playground, and then move the project forward with construction documents and specifications. So in July, we invited four proposals to do just that, we received two. We had an in-house review of those proposals, and the case of Sito, who did the master plan design, was the top-rated firm at the end of that process. So we're recommending that we award that contract, the amount of $138,500, to the case of Sito, to advance the project, and move that forward.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Do we have any questions of Jay from the council, Larry?
Nope, looks good to me.
How about Kelly?
Yeah.
Council President Jeffries, you have any questions?
Welcome, everybody.
Welcome, everybody.
Sorry for my delay.
Hope your trip back from Ben was unexcitable.
It was a nice drive. Fall has hit the pass, it looked beautiful. Sorry, Jay, I just wanted to, again, praise you and your staff for the work you've done on the design of this park and how you brought the community in on that. It's really meant a lot to those areas, so thanks.
Okay, let's, Alan, anything from you?
Yes, Jay, on the street design that's not included in this proposal?
Right, not this time. I think there's some options that may be available to us in coming months. Kind of a, kind of a lot of moving parts about the streets. We do have an obligation with the park construction to complete the streets in one fashion or another. They could be half streets on either side, they could be full streets, which is ideal. That's yet to be determined, but I have met with Stafford Land Company, who's apparently acquired the property to the west of the park. They're interested in helping us out, ensuring those costs as they are obliged to, but part of the acquisition agreement with the court and everything does include their participation. The timing is the key thing with them. They think they may be ready to go a year from now. That would push us back a little bit, but if they can get on board, that would certainly help us out. The owner to the east remains Don Jones. I doubt that he's, has the capacity today. I haven't talked to him in a while, but to move forward. So we're still investigating those options, and so we may come back with design elements that come through McCase Piscino. We may come back with a different scenario, and we're working on it.
It's exciting to see. That's going to be a great park. Yeah, brilliant.
Scott?
And Jay, my question was the timing, and you'd indicated at least a year out, correct?
Right, when we, when we've worked through this process, we've always said in the perfect world, we can get started next summer. I think there's an outside chance, but it's an outside chance. It may get delayed, it's certainly going to be over a couple of different fiscal years we might phase this, depending on how the streets work out. Otherwise, I think we're in good shape, but that's a key element. It's always been discussed as one of those moving parts that we need to lock down, and we're working on it.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Jay? Again, Jay, you did a great job on this one, I think it's a tribute to you and your staff and your business partners on, if you look at the parks like Shuguen and the new Northwest Neighborhood, the West Side Park, all the parks that we've done, I think we're all very, very proud of our park system and the design of our parks. So council, we've heard from staff on this one, on Resolution Number 2015-45, which is the contract for the Park Design Engineering and Construction Services for the Northwest Neighborhood Park. That being said, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Council Ruden, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Yoder, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the motion passes, and we can, we'll move forward on that one. Thank you, Jay. That takes us, we do have our two ad resolutions tonight, and one, the first one is Resolution Number 2015-46, and that's repealing Resolution 2002-16, which added a $10 service charge on the citations for the benefit of Yamhill County Superior Courts. Candace, this one is yours.
Thank you very much. Somehow I've, oh, I went in the wrong direction. In 2002, the council passed an ordinance, or excuse me, a resolution, I don't know what to do, adding a $10 surcharge to each citation from our police department of offenders into municipal court. There were a couple of exceptions, but for the most part, every citation had this $10 surcharge. A bit ago, the state legislature declared that they were setting maximum fines, and that no courts could add surcharges onto those fines. So because of that, we have not been able to add that surcharge on for quite some time now. We've been handling old citations, so we're still getting some of the surcharges from the older citations, but they're very much dwindling out now. This year so far, we have brought in, since January, we've brought in about $1,600 in terms of the surcharges. So as they are going away, I thought it would be a good idea to repeal the resolution that requires us to add the surcharges on, considering that the state says that we can't do it.
Okay, Candace, questions so on, is there dwindling any of the existing older citations that are coming in, that are coming in with the $10 surcharge? Is that refunded? Do we keep that?
No.
It's just going forward?
We can keep that, it's just that going forward, we cannot add the surcharge on. So the old citations that have the surcharge added on are completely legal and still are now.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of our city attorney, Alan or Scott? Kelly, Kevin, Larry? None, okay, council, then what I will do is I will entertain a motion on Resolution 2015-46, which repeals Resolution 2002-16.
So moved.
Moved by Council Manke, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Council President Jeffrey, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that Resolution Number 2015-46 has passed the council. That'll take us to our second ad resolution tonight, and this is Resolution Number 2015-47, and this is waiving a reversionary right and authorizing the execution of a quitclaim deed, and Candace, how about the staff report on that one?
In 1989, the city of McMinnville applied for and received a CDBG, a Community Development Block Grant, with which money we bought the wonderful old house down here on First Street that has been Henderson House for all these years. We bought the house and refurbished it, and then we deeded it over to Henderson House. At that time, we did the deeding over in 1990, and at that time, in the deed, we included a possibility of reverter, where we said, if you ever stop using this house for the purposes that you're using it for, the crisis shelter, then we will reserve to ourselves the right to step in and take the house back. The Henderson House people came and visited with Martha, not very long ago, or a while back, I guess it was by now, time flies, and said that they were in need of a larger facility, and they were hoping that we would let them have the house, remove the possibility of reverter, so that they could sell the house and use those funds to buy their new larger facility. So if you approve this resolution tonight, that's in effect what will happen. I have a quitclaim deed that the mayor can sign. Unfortunately, he can't sign it tonight because it has to be notarized, so he won't be able to do that tonight, but we can take care of that tomorrow if you agree that this house should be turned over to Henderson House. One other thing is CDBGs do require that the purpose that they were, the purpose for which they were given be fulfilled for at least five years. So Henderson House has been in that location doing what they do best for 25 years, so they've more than fulfilled the CDBG requirements.
Candace, one question on that, if we release it, if we do the quitclaim deed so they can sell a property and locate other property, does that allow, since we will not be on the deed whatsoever, would that allow for some reason Henderson House, if they determine to use that as rental income or some other income, and we won't have any say because we're no longer on the deed? So is it only for, is it only if it's sold? Because I, you know, I, not that it would make difference, but if they came in and say, well, we got a trust, or we got something, we're going to build a new building, but so we have that sustaining income, then what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and lease or rent that building, to rent that house to somebody else?
If you enter into this quitclaim deed, you will have no more say over what happens to the house or the proceeds from the house if it is sold.
Okay. So let's start down with you, Larry, any questions?
No, I think that the value of the Henderson House to our community, it's our obligation to work with them.
Kelly?
No questions.
Kevin?
No questions.
Hey, Alan?
Yes, I do have a question. It doesn't have anything to do about the value of the Henderson House, it's been remarkable, but, so the city, let me get this straight, the city will not be involved with the old or the new, either one of them, and, am I right?
We're releasing our interest in the old.
Releasing the interest on the old one.
And if you choose not to, counselor, we could, and then they put the house on the, you know, went to put the house on the market, we could definitely claim the house under the terms of the old deed.
Okay. And how are they acquiring another property, or have, they have already acquired it?
Martha probably knows more about that than I do.
They plan to liquidate this larger house and go into an area, they're going to make money on this house, then they're going to go into an area that's not downtown, into a little, you know, into some of the outskirts of the area here, and buy two lesser homes that give more capacity.
Okay.
And of course, then we would be involved in deciding those two less rooms in case for some reason they didn't meet the existing zoning ordinance for that kind of a use, or, yeah, so.
So they are going to liquidate, meaning sell, the old place right now, right away?
If they can make it all work, because they're also looking at a different apartment, condos kind of thing, but they do think that they can get enough funds out of this house that if they move location, they can expand the number of beds that they can provide.
Okay. Yeah, Scott?
And Rick, I had the same question as you had, but I, due to their long-term nature of a proven track record and a desire to continue doing what they're doing, I feel comfortable.
Okay, I think that's my, except they've been here for 25 years, do really an exemplary job, so. Commit, council, we have in front of us Resolution 2015-47, which is waiving a reversionary right and authorizing the execution of a quit, quitclaim deed for the Henderson House, so that I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Council Manke, a second by Council Ruden, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I'll, about 9:30 in the morning, if you can get a hold of Marcia, just call me at home, and she's ready, and I can come down any time, and assign that.
Anytime, boy, until 9:30.
Okay. So that takes us through our five resolutions, that takes us to advice and information items. We do have a little bit of time, so I'll go around the council and start with Councilor Yoder, and anything you'd like to report on there?
No, sir, as you probably know, I missed the meeting last week. I was out of town, so I have nothing to report.
I can tell you, Larry Simon, on the Parkway Committee, the bypass is going real, well, if you've been anyplace on Baker Street the last, or 99W the last couple weeks, you've probably seen very slow-moving traffic as they bring those large beams through McMinnville. At the South Y, I ran into one, physically ran into it, at the South Y this morning, where they had traffic backed up in all directions, because coming up 99W, the truck actually had to turn all the way over, it's a double-stir truck, where the front tires of the tractor were on the sidewalk in front of the bowling alley, then they had to jump the front tires back over the median, just to get it lined up to come down Baker Street. So, and I mean, it was, it was big, it was longer than this road, at least. So that being said, in the Parkway, the, they're working those beams, they're going into the flyover in Newburgh in front of Smurfet, or Publishers Paper in the elevated area, that three-quarters of a mile of elevated roadway, but they're getting ready to start, actually starting some paving. But they're getting ready to start, actually starting some pave, paving on portions of the bypass that are out where they have the three bridges done now, so. And that's about it on the bypass, so Kelly, you have anything?
Actually, I really don't. Wycon was canceled this last month, so.
Okay, so you don't have anything. Mr. Cogperson, do you have anything on cog or anything else?
Oh, it's quiet.
Quiet, ooh, yeah. Alan?
Airport Commission meeting, October, when is that, Mike?
I want to say the sixth.
Sixth, yeah, that's what I was going to say, but I'm going to be out of town, so it's going to be my second in a row that I've missed.
Is it, is it at this meeting, Mike, when the commission is going to review the FBO proposals? Martha?
We're talking right now, we're scoring, if we can get a Skype, I'm going to be in Ben's, I'm hoping to get a Skype session with the panel that we have scoring to make sure that we're ready to go ahead with the recommendation to the council.
Okay.
Or the commission, excuse me.
And that, when, when, if, if we do get the approval of the council, or the commission that comes to council, when was the new, generally the new contract from the FBO take place?
It doesn't have, the, the two proposals are different, and they have different timelines that would drive them. If, the current FBO contract does not run out until June of next year. So barring, barring the new FBO from purchasing the remainder of that contract, then it would happen in June, or July 1st, the new fiscal year. If they can buy out the current FBO, but that's totally, that is not within our purview, that's between two business entities and whether they want to execute a contract amongst themselves, so.
Speaking of FBOs, I was out in John Day this last week and had a town hall at their, at their FBO up there. I mean, John Day is about the size of Dayton, and they have a world-class FBO out there. It's a state airport, but.
Still, it's very nice.
I would like to know how they got that built, because it's pretty impressive.
Probably firefighting funds would be my guess.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of money from the forestry service and BLM and everybody else. Okay, Scott?
A couple of things, just to make sure all the counselors are aware of, on Tuesday, September 29th, here in this building, there will be a open house where the public is invited on the Alpine Avenue Community Forum. And so primarily what that's going to be is the architectural firm that has been working with the Downtown Committee is going to present the directional plans for Alpine Avenue. So if you had an opportunity to go to the Northeast Gateway kind of open house where they had murals and all the plans up, and then, and this will be between 5:00 and 7:00 PM, and at 6:00, there will be a program where the architectural people will kind of walk you through kind of the vision of what the advisory committee have determined, the phases of Alpine Avenue ought to look like. And we have a festival piece, and then we have a craft, thinking that there's going to be a craft area, and then I think from 11:00 on, 11th or on, it's going to be, it's still open, because we don't know what that part of Alpine's going to be looking at. But again, we would open that up for anyone on the council to, to come and just be a part of it, because it'll bring you up to speed of what Alpine Avenue's going to, to look like.
September 29th?
The 29th, which is a Tuesday.
When is that?
And again.
Five to seven.
So that's kind of, great things happening from that perspective. Last week, just to update you on Visit McMinnville, we had an opportunity to do our, our final interviewing of our candidate for the executive director, and we're in the process right now of approaching an individual, and we're not completed with that, but I, a lot, a lot of interviewing, a lot of hard work has gone into that. And so very shortly, we will, we will know if we've put together a deal for our executive director. We're also looking for space for the initial office. Those are going to, the League of Oregon's meeting tomorrow, 2:00, at the Visit Bend offices. We're going to, Doug's going to take us on a tour of their facility, their office, their visitor center, and just kind of open up what Visit Bend looks like, because that's what we're patterning ourselves after. So a lot of good things on, on both of those fronts that are happening and moving forward.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Let's go in, Department of, Mike, you have anything to share with us?
I'll just briefly add to Scott's comments on the transportation bond work. We're wrapping up this summer's overlay work, which is about $1.4 million. It's about a quarter of the street resurfacing projects that were in the bond measure. We're in discussions with David Evan and Associates to do the design for next summer's pavement resurfacing work, which will include some full-depth reclamation, some rebuilding of the entire street structure, the, the one at Riverside Drive, and, and also along Wallace, where we have some pretty rough conditions. We've started scoping discussions with WH Pacific for the pedestrian connection along Ford Street in the dip, with targeting construction next summer for that project. We met today with CH2M Hill to start scoping discussion on Hill Road with a target of 2017 construction. And we met yesterday with Murray Smith and Associates regarding the Second Street project right outside here, also targeting a 2017 construction window. So lots of things happening regarding transportation bond work. If you haven't been on the city's website recently, if you do go there, you'll note, in several places, we have links to the Transportation Bond Program website, which provides project updates and sort of an overview of what we're trying to accomplish. You can find that in the quick links, in the latest news, and on the engineering pages. So if you haven't poked around on that, it's pretty good information, and we'll keep that updated. And as we bring other consultants onboard for these projects, they'll interface with that website and add project updates as well. So lots of things happening on the transportation bond.
Hey, thanks, Mike. Chief?
Nothing.
Hey, Jay?
Kids in the block is underway, I think you know it all. Happens in the fall. We've got more kids this year at this time than we had at this time last year, so we're very encouraged. We had good numbers in the end of the, during Owen Billings, as the year goes on. Soccer got underway last Saturday. We've got our kids involved. The park was great, testament to our great park crew, and people commented on that. Of course, it helps to have a beautiful Sunday, and the perfect, perfect conditions out there, so it was really great. New employee Katie Noig, who joined us September 1st, is already making contributions. She's involved in the leadership development program at the Chamber as well, and we're happy to have her. She's doing a great job so far. Park ranger program winding down. We'll finish with parks, and, well, we'll finish with the downtown assignments at the end of September. We might sneak a few in, just to keep it honest downtown in October, but primarily we're done down there, and you'll see some park rangers in parks through October as the weather allows. Thanks to Candace for all the work on the Healthways contract. We've entered into a, we're entering into a contract with a health network, so their clients who qualify can come and use our services in a manner that allows their insurance to pay for their participation, and we think that'll grow our membership. Which will benefit us financially, and it also benefits the community of elder adults who need assistance in joining those kind of fitness programs that Healthways promotes. And also, obviously, all the work we did on the park acquisition took a lot of twists and turns, and we appreciate it. Thanks, Candace.
Thank you.
Okay, Doug?
If you're looking for somebody to do it on a Tuesday evening, I'd like to remind you that on October 6th, in the police training room, we'll be meeting with our Urban Renewal Advisory Committee, and any member of this group who wish to attend, we invite Elaine Howard to come here and facilitate a conversation with urban renewal managers from the cities of Sherwood and the city of Albany, to share with us their best practices and answer a series of questions that we would oppose to that. I'd love to have you join us in that conversation. Then on the 13th of October, in this room with this body and with the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee, we'll have a conversation with Sue Disciple, who will lead us in an exercise around selecting project priorities and further depth conversation on the Alpine Avenue project and where we should go with funding for that.
What time is the October 6th meeting?
October 6th meeting is from 5:00 to 7:30.
Yeah, it's 5:00 to 7:30, Doug.
What's this? In its scheduled format, with all of them differently designed, the one that had to go to the council, so they were all documented in one place. Jay?
Mary, sorry. Did we read this by then? On October 3rd, John's Club, who is helping raise funds for our playground at the new neighborhood park, is conducting a private auction in the center, so if you'd mind participating in that, you'd be supporting Northwest Neighborhood Park project.
Great, great auction.
Tickets or other information, you can contact me or contact those colleagues that you know.
Hey, thank you, Jay. Rose?
Um, nothing.
Okay, Candace?
Nothing, thank you.
I have a question for.
Oh, sure, Larry.
Rose, the interview is on the next Tuesday, that we'll, where we'll be interviewing Candace for a job.
Exactly.
Okay, all right, where are they, where are they going to be held at?
Um, locations to be determined, and I'll give you that information.
Okay, thank you.
And Larry, just to, those would probably be the final candidates, because there's been some pre-work done.
Yeah.
And really, there's just one hot candidate.
Yeah.
Yeah. A final.
We haven't been real successful yet, have we, to retain?
She's a hard person to recruit, you know. So Martha?
I just want to double tap on what Scott and Doug brought up. We are purposely putting together some urban renewal, you know, the 29th, you get a chance to look at what's currently planned, then you got Elaine Howard to come in to refresh you on best practices, and then the 13th is that work session, because, you know, we're to the point where we, we may have some money for a bond project coming up here. And so we really need to put some, some brain cells on what's the priority and what we're going to tackle first. So intent is, well, hopefully we'll tee that up correctly for you so we can roll right into the goal session, and to get some work on urban renewal. And then finally, I just wanted to point out, I seem to, you know, to me, it just seemed that it was only, you know, appropriate that Candace's final resolution would be as a, you know, to help Henderson House continue forward, and it's, you know, a very amazing, and what it's, and what it provides in its services, as she concludes over, you know, three decades worth of service herself.
Thank you.
Hard to believe. Candace, Candace, Candace. Okay, council, there was some other information in your packet. There was the recap of the 2015 UFO parade, the Visit McMinnville financial statements for the two months ending in August, and then our building division report. Does the council have anything further? If not, meeting adjourned.